Thank you. Good morning, everyone. It's the first of March and it's the Ordinary Council, meaning Ipswich City Council. And I guess on a note, this will be the last council meeting for this term. So thank you very much for those who are attending. I know in the public gallery, we have the four children of Tom Edwards, who are here for the condolence motion. So thank you, Gary and Suzanne and Emery and Paul for being here. I call attendance at commencement and everyone's in attendance. Good morning to you all. I'll now go to the acknowledgement of country. Ipswich City Council respectfully acknowledges the traditional owners as custodians of the land and waters we share. We pay our respects to the elders, past, present and emerging, as the keepers of the traditions, customs, cultures and stories of proud people. We now move on to our opening prayer. I'd like to invite Pastor Geoff Wilson from Vision Christian Family Church to come to the lectern to lead us into prayer into this last council meeting. Pastor Geoff, do you mind introducing yourself and your church? And you can talk a bit about your church before you lead into prayer if you'd like?
I'm actually retired, but I have pastored a church in the city for more than 42 years before retirement. And can I just say, as a very long-term Ipswich resident, I just want to thank you. I look at council as doing an extraordinary job. You are under increasing public scrutiny and the public is sometimes not very friendly. Politics can be exceptionally cruel. And I just commend you for all that you have done, are doing and will do. So I do honestly and genuinely sincerely want to say thank you. Thank you for your service. I think it's been amazing. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Geoff. Thank you.
I'm going to pray. Now, Father, we do come before you because one day every one of us will stand before you. And Father, you have given to this council a particular calling. And Father, the city is experiencing amazing growth. That growth is not without difficulty. But you've given to these men and these women a very particular call. And I do pray by the power of the Spirit that you would help them and enable them. You would sovereignly direct decisions that are made. And Father, I do pray that you'd protect them from a public that is looking very, very closely and Father, sometimes too closely. So bless them and help them in Jesus' precious name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Geoff. We move on to apologies and leave of absence. There are none. So now move on to item five, which is a condolence motion. I'd like to move that council conveys condolences on behalf of the citizens of the city of Ipswich to the family of the late Mr. Tom Edwards, who passed away on the 16th of February 2024. And so I'll speak to that. Tom Edwards, OAM, was at the forefront of electrical innovation in Ipswich. It started with wringer washers. As electricity was first introduced to households, from the poles and cable, Tom himself helped roll that across Cowbar, Roadvale and Mount Walker. One story of Tom's enthusiasm was how residents would line the footpath outside the store window displayed to watch the latest invention, the television. People would even bring their deck chairs and call Tom at home to ask him to come and change the channel. He saw, of course, Auntie Edwards. The very mention of his store became synonymous with reliability and trust, earning it the status of a household name. You'd be hard pressed to find anyone in Ipswich who did not have an appliance in their home bought from Auntie Edwards. Tom's father Roy started Auntie Edwards with £5 he borrowed from his auntie in 1931, with just a push bike and a few tools doing electrical repairs door to door. Tom took over the company when he was just 19 and worked alongside his uncles and later his own family. The company went from strength to strength and after 77 years, had a staff of 350 people, 18 electrical retail outlets, three furniture stores, a commercial division and electrical contracting and services division. He faced many challenges over the years, including the 1974 floods that inundated the Electrical Service Centre at Marsden Parade and a fire in 1995 that burnt the Bow Desert store to the ground. He never gave up as his deep appreciation for the Ipswich community drove him forward. The friendly service set this store apart and that was down to Tom's leadership and support of what he thought was his greatest asset, his great team. Tom Haddon Edwards was born in Ipswich on the 15th of February 1937 to parents Roy and Agnes Edwards. He had a brother, Lou, Sir Lou, and sisters Gwen and Merlin. He attended Raceview State School and Ipswich Grammar School before starting his electrical apprenticeship at 15. He met his wife, Ivy Weatherhog, and married her in 1959, the year after he completed his national service. They have four children, Gary, Suzanne, Paul and Anne Marie, who are here in our public gallery this morning, along with nine grandchildren and six great grandchildren, and would you believe, two have been born in the last week. A productive family. Tom was a man of faith, a life deacon at the Raceview Congregational Church. He used his gifts of leadership and generosity to serve in various roles in his church as well as at church events. His service extended through the Ipswich community. He had memberships with the Ipswich Show Society, Ipswich Rotary Club, St Andrews Hospital Board, the Salvation Army Advisory Board, Electrical Contractors Association and Retrovision. Tom also carried the Queen's baton across the David Trumpi Bridge in 2018. He was Businessperson of the Year on two separate occasions and was awarded the Order of Australia Medal for five decades of service to our community. When Tom wasn't at his store, you could find him at top of horse mustering his cattle or showing his best cattle at the Ipswich and Buna shows. Tom passed away in his sleep on the 16th of February 2024, the day after he turned 87. May Tom's remarkable legacy, his remarkable family, inspire us all to emulate his commitment to service, community and the pursuit of excellence. Thank you. If there's any other discussion or any comments, I'll put that condolence motion to the vote. Those in favour, thank you. It's carried. Thank you very much for coming along this morning. Thank you. And thank you for your father's service. Move on to item six, which is tributes and there are none. Item seven is the presentation of petitions. There are none. Item eight is the presentation deputations. There are none. Item nine is public participation. There is none. I now move on to item 10, which is a matter of public interest. And I have a matter of public interest to acknowledge the service of Kate Kunselman. I would like to express our heartfelt gratitude for the exemplary service of councillor Kate Kunselman. Councillor Kate Kunselman is not contesting for Division Four at the local election. And so I wanted to take a moment to acknowledge her service to the community over the past four years. Councillor Kunselman leaves behind a legacy of listening and acting on behalf of Division Four residents and the wider Ipswich community. She's actually the only councillor who's a member of every single committee that council has. Not only that, she's the Chair of the Economic and Industry Development Committee, as well as Deputy Chair of the Ipswich Central Redevelopment Committee, Deputy Chair of the Community Culture Arts and Sports Committee. In times of crisis, councillor Kunselman has been an unwavering pillar of support for the community as the Deputy Chair of the Local Disaster Management Group, as well as the Chair of the Local Recovery Resilience Group. Her support and decision making during COVID, several floods and significant rain events ensured stakeholders and council were working as cohesively as possible, as well as influencing how our flood risk management and recovery could be improved and how we move together as a term in this council during that. At the forefront of her work through these times of adversity was ensuring that clear and most recent information was being communicated consistently between authorities and residents, something Kate's very passionate about. Beyond crisis management, councillor Kunselman has been a passionate advocate for domestic violence awareness. Recognising the profound impact this issue has on our community, she has worked hard to raise awareness of this issue and also to see positive action implemented by council. A longstanding member of the Zonta Club, councillor Kunselman made sure that there was a red bench in Tumal Place, which is a clear sign of our city's unity and commitment to bring an end to domestic and family violence. A strong advocate for all the infrastructure in her division, including the upgrade of the North Ipswich Reserve, councillor Kunselman has been a champion for the project to be delivered alongside the Deputy Mayor and subject that we were able to secure $20 million from the federal government and continue to advocate to the Queensland Government for support for the North Ipswich Reserve. Councillor Kunselman has been at the forefront of ensuring her residents' concerns have been heard and actioned in relation to a number of significant community issues. Many of the issues councillor Kunselman has addressed are complex, challenging and emotionally charged. This included standing up for Chiwai residents in the face of noise and dust issues from the Tivoli Raceway, ensuring resident concerns were addressed in the assessment of a new childcare centre in Carolee, and her strong advocacy for the flood affected residents of My High Grove in Brussels. I don't think people know how many 3am calls you were taking for residents at those times, Kate. Councillor Kunselman, alongside the Deputy Mayor, have brought forward significant commitments during this term, including the $1.6 million upgrade of the Sutton Park Skate Facility in partnership with the Queensland Government, major works to stabilise and improve Ironpot Creek and Pine Mountain, a new barbecue shelter and amenities block for the Rosewood showgrounds, as well as significant commitments to road upgrades, including William Street, Rosewood, Adalong Avenue in Thuguna, Burrellan Station Road in Pine Mountain and Blackwood Avenue, North Ipswich. Not only has councillor Kunselman worked to deliver significant outcomes for the city of Ipswich, what truly sets her apart is her commitment to listening to the needs and aspirations of her local community. I think it is easy to see this is where her true passion lies. Empowering local community groups, organisations and sporting clubs to make a positive contribution to Ipswich is at the heart of her values. Her dedication for empowering local groups through support, resources and collaboration has built a more resilient community and added value to the Ipswich community at a grassroots level. I would like to express my gratitude to councillor Kunselman for what she has achieved during her time as councillor, as well as being a beacon of compassion and dedication for myself, for the councillors, this council and our community. And I thank you, Kate. Would you like to respond, councillor Kunselman?
Thank you, Chair. I seek leave to respond. It's with mixed feelings that I contemplate not running again. Since I am not running, I reflect on the experience of being an Ipswich City councillor for the 2024 term. What I valued is working with the competent council officers in all departments. How raw and uninformed we must have seemed four years ago. I have found council officers to be invariably polite, helpful in sharing information and with a great understanding of what we might be trying to achieve for residents, even while they may have been saying no. In regards to the current campaigns, I am shocked, yes, even after four years, at the level of misinformation and the vitriol that is evident. Makes me glad I am not running. This is detrimental to the future relationships of elected representatives. A future council would benefit if relations among councillors were not destroyed before the result is announced. I get it that an aspiring councillor needs to demonstrate that incumbent has not been up to scratch. This is self-evident politics. But voters need to rely on objective information and not just biased opinion without foundation. I urge residents to take the time to understand the way in which council works, what is possible, and that there is a direct relationship between services and the amount of rates that they pay. Councillors are human beings who can be damaged by lies and innuendo. It has always been my contention, obviously not shared by all, that councillors need to meet often and share information. This would seem to me to be vital to future functioning. This is not a competition. There's many things that could be said. However people behave, it is meant to be constructive and to contribute to the overall good. Councillors are meant to think of the outcomes of their every action and statement and not endlessly reconstruct the past. The past is only useful in directing thinking towards improved action, improved future action. My advice to incoming councillors is simple. Firstly, consult each other. Take the time to convince your fellow councillors of your point of view. Secondly, be kind to each other. This is not a competition. Share information and do not lose sight of the overall good and look to the future, not the past. I wish the best to the incoming council. Personally, I look forward to some form of service to the community that I love.
Thank you very much, councillor Kunselman. I'll open up for any other comments. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Mayor, if I may, having worked, obviously closely alongside councillor Kunselman for the last four years, I absolutely need to highlight some of Kate's attributes to which any councillor should aspire. Councillor Kunselman has an incredible work ethic. I have never seen anybody who was so keen to serve in my life. It is her knowledge across various skill sets that she has brought to this council, but more so the wisdom that she can provide to her colleagues around her to settle most situations. I'm going to finish up before I get a bit emotional. I don't get emotional, but I do have to clearly state that I will, if I'm re-elected, very much miss my colleague beside me. And one of those things that I'll miss the most is Kate's incredible witty sense of humour that has kept me sane for four years. Thank you, my dear friend.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And thank you very much for your, I think, your reflection and your wise words for a future council. Thank you very much. I now move on to declarations of interested matters on the agenda. Are there any declarations? I have two at this moment.
Thanks, May. Yep. In accordance with section 150 EQ of the Local Government Act, I councillor Andrew Fekner informed the meeting that I have a declarable conflict of interest in item 15.6 entitled Ipswich Central Redevelopment Report, a committee report. The nature of the interest are my business interests in A1A Events Proprietary Limited and Bar Heisenberg Proprietary Limited, both located in the top of town in Ipswich. I plan on dealing with this conflict by leaving the room while the matter is considered and voted on.
Thank you.
In accordance with section 150 EQ of the Local Government Act 2009, I councillor Jacob Mattson informed the meeting that I have a declarable conflict of interest in item 15.6 titled Ipswich Central Redevelopment Committee Report. The nature of the declarable conflict of interest is I was previously a member of the Executive of the Ipswich Tradeshall and Labour Day Committee and their building, the Ipswich Tradeshall, is adjacent to council CBD redevelopment. As a result of my conflict of interest, I'll leave the meeting room while the matter is discussed and voted on.
Thank you. Are there any other declarations of interest? In that case, I'll move on to item two, which is the confirmation of minutes. Are there any questions of council officers? I will move that the minutes of the ordinary meeting held on the 15th of February 2024 be confirmed. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just in speaking to these minutes, I just wanted to update council that after moving the mayoral motion, which we all supported and obviously had councillor Ireland's amendment as well for Violin's Law, about the establishment of the permanent police presence at Red Bank Plains Town Square, the following Monday I attended the State Cabinet, which held a community cabinet here in Bundamba, and spoke directly with the Premier and the Police and Community Safety Minister as well. I also followed up by sending a letter to the Minister of the Police Commission, the Attorney General of Queensland, with our request to increase police presence and look at repeat offenders and bail conditions on behalf of our community. I'm delighted to see that on Sunday, the state government announced 40 extra police, 10 new police cars will be allowed across Ipswich in the next two years, which was, I think, no doubt in response to our advocacy and our community pressure. So Ipswich residents deserve to feel safe and have a more visible police presence and go a long way. And I know a lot of people were involved with that, especially our state members, but I want to thank our community for coming together in a united voice and securing these extra resources for our community. Are there any errors, amendments, corrections to the minutes? I'll put them to the vote. Those in favour, it's unanimous and carried. There is no mayoral minute. There's no business outstanding. So we go on to item 15, which is the reception and consideration of committee reports. So I'll move that the council adopt the report of the Growth Infrastructure and Waste Committee of the 22nd of February 2024. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Tully. Any errors, amendments, corrections? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour? If you like. Oh, sorry. It's actually, yeah, sorry. My apologies. I treated it as like minutes. My apologies. I'll open up for discussion on the actual matters.
For about the Court Action Status Report, there are only 11 matters currently for the courts, principally the Planning and Environment Court, which is a pretty proud record for a council of our size and the amount of development occurring in this city. I know some councils have many more issues and many more court proceedings than we do. And I think it's testament to our offices initially getting the decisions right, minimising the number of cases before the courts. Of those 11 matters, I went through them. There's two of them at least that date back to 2021. One's the Spring Lakes Holdings matter, which was a very complex matter over the years. And I'm certainly not judgmental of the delays through the courts, but that one is now going to the High Court, according to the applicant and the information that was provided to us. The High Court takes considerable time for its decisions. It's possible that there won't be a decision on that matter until next year. So that's almost four years before a final decision will be made. The other one on the 18th, the appeal was lodged on the 18th of August 2021. It's a Yamanto development. And the hearing was held on the 21st of October 2022, and we're still awaiting judgment. I think that's a considerable time, considerable time to wait. And I've raised the issue before whether or not the Attorney General should look at the appointment of more judges to the Planning and Environment Court. Not that there are many cases that have delayed like this. There are reports from other councils in my position on the Policy Executive of the Local Government Association. Sometimes cases in other parts of Queensland are held up for considerable periods of time. Look, it's in the interest of the applicant principally, but also the council and the community that decisions are made quickly, not taking three or four years from when an appeal is lodged. It's often said that justice delayed is justice denied. And I think we need to, even though we've only got a small number of appeals and an even smaller number of appeals where there's a significant delay, it is an issue that needs to be addressed. And it's one that hopefully I'll have the opportunity of continuing to pursue that matter in the future.
Thank you, councillor Tully. Any other discussion on matters for the Growth Infrastructure and Waste Committee? I put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Now I go to item 15.2, which is the Report of the Governance and Transparency Committee, the 22nd of February 2024. I'll hand over to the Chair of the community to see how we'd like this report managed.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm happy to move the recommendation as is in the agenda.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second? Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Any discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, it's unanimous and carried. I now move on to item 15.3, which is the Report of the Community Culture Arts and Sports Committee of the 22nd of February 2024. I'll hand over to the Chair of that committee to see how they would like that managed.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move that council adopt the report of the Community Culture Arts and Sports Committee of the 22nd of February 2024.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Kunselman. I'll open up for discussion.
Thank you, Mayor, if I may. I would just like to highlight and thank Amy Carrington, CEO of Domestic Violence Action Centre and the other dedicated staff within D VAC, as well as the Integrated Working Group, the various agencies that come together around Ipswich to deliver that really critical support to victims of domestic violence, as well as the perpetrators, to try and, you know, break cycles. Really proud of the work that we've done here at council and our public position that we've taken on this matter. Domestic violence has no place in any community. It's a scourge on society. There are direct links to youth crime, as well as enormous pressure on our health systems. So for a variety of reasons, it's important that we stand out. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Fekner.
Thank you and thank you councillor Doyle for your kind words. And thank you and councillor Kunselman for your efforts in advocating for council to...
to form a position on that important issue. And it's great that we got that to land as a legacy of this council. Another legacy that we leave here is for the arts community, and I thank every single councillor around this table for supporting me and supporting the local arts community to get the brand new, and if adopted by council today, we'll be calling it the Ipswich Art Workshop going. I think that it's a really wonderful initiative by Ipswich City Council to offer more spaces for creatives to do the wonderful work that they do in our community. And for it to be turned around so quickly is almost unheard of in local government and the way that we can move. So when we put our mind to things and when we think differently and out of the box, as creatives have done forever and a day here in this city, running on the smell of an oily rag, we can really get things done in a beautiful way. So I thank all of the councillors for their support on getting the Ipswich Art Workshop moving and off the ground for the arts community in Ipswich. And I'd also just like to highlight the fact that the good work with our Ipswich Youth Advisory Council continues. Councillor Ireland, I remember when you were leading the charge on the Youth Advisory Council when I was a member all those years ago, and I do still have fond memories of that. So I hope that we can continue to instill and inspire young people to become leaders of our city and be engaged as citizens as well. And the programme that we're going to be running for the next 12 months is fabulous. There's so many opportunities for these young people to involve themselves in the business of Ipswich City Council, to give them real and genuine insights and hopefully inspire them to talk about it more and to open up the conversation in the community about what happens in council. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Fekner. Any other discussion? Thank you. I made some points when we had this came to committee, but I wanted to touch on a couple of things. The Domestic Violence and Female Action Prevention Strategy and Action Plan is, I think, a groundbreaking piece of work. And I thank councillor Kunsman and councillor Doyle for your very hands-on approach, and yourself councillor Fekner, working with D VAC and others in council on that. I made the observation then, and I'm going to make it again now, that this council is a female majority council for the first time in our history. I do note that probably took this for us to get this piece of signature work that is so needed in our community. And I think it's a testament to this council that this work has progressed for the betterment of our community. I think what's happening with Jamie's Kitchen is amazing, and I'm really excited to see what's going to be happening then. I know the creative community is as well. Yes, and full support to the Ipswich Youth Advisory Council. My daughter was on that council with yourself, and we were interacting with councillor Ireland then as well, with my daughter Gabby when she was about 13 years ago. So it's great to see that it's so popular and, you know, so competitive to get into as well. Thank you. Any other discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. I now move on to item 15.4, the report of the Economic and Industry Development Committee of the 22nd of February 2024. I'll hand over to the chair, councillor Kunsman, on how she'd like to manage this report.
Thank you, chair. I move that council adopt the report of the Economic and Industry Development Committee, number two of 2024, of the 22nd of February 2024.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Fekner. I'll open it up for discussion. No discussion. I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. Now I move on to item 15.5, the report of the Environment Sustainability Committee of the 22nd of February 2024. I'll hand over to the chair of that, the deputy mayor. How would you like that managed?
Thank you, mayor. I move that council adopt the report of the Environment Sustainability Committee, number two of 2024, from the 22nd of February.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Fekner. I'll open it up for discussion. No discussion. I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, it's unanimous and carried. 15.6. Thank you, general. Thank you. We now move on to item 15.6, the report of the Ipswich Central redevelopment committee of the 22nd of February 2024. I'll hand over to the chair of that, councillor Doyle. How would you like this report managed?
Thank you, mayor. Yes, I would like to move that council adopt the report of the Ipswich Central redevelopment committee from the 22nd of February 2024.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you, deputy mayor. Any discussion?
Thank you, mayor, if I may. As our final ordinary council meeting draws to a close, I just would like to say a few words in relation to the Ipswich Central redevelopment committee and some of the important work we've done over the last four years. The interim administrator several years ago set out the reasons behind the decision to develop the Nicholas Street precinct. In essence, the council and the Ipswich community were put in a position where we had no choice. A decade ago, council acquired, for whatever reasons, a number of properties in the CBD. We have inherited that situation. Any debate about whether council should own or develop these CBD properties or not is immaterial. The simple reality is that it does, and we needed to work out the best thing to do. We've engaged a significant number of experts in the retail, commercial, and entertainment development fields to advise council on what to do. Their professional advice, combined with market sounding with a number of companies across the property development and investment sectors, led to council, led council to a very clear, documented strategy to redevelop, refurbish, lease, and then sell. The market advice from potential investors clearly indicated that there was no interest in acquiring these assets, including the Commonwealth Hotel, unless council virtually gave them away. And even then, there would be no certainty for Ipswich community that any new owner would undertake redevelopment or marketing activity. Ipswich City Council under administration made the decision on the retail precinct of Nicholas Street redevelopment, which will benefit the entire community for years to come. And this council has driven and overseen this important piece of work, which I am extremely proud of. We must all remember, though, that it is a catalytic project, which means the benefits from the development are significantly greater than a strict or isolated analysis of the assets alone and their immediate return on investment. A catalytic project defining feature that sets it apart from traditional commercial real estate development is patient equity, financial equity that has expectations of returns over the long term, generally over five years. One of the biggest aims of a catalytic project is to improve economic growth, not just within the precinct, but for the wider Ipswich Central and Ipswich. It is a catalyst to attract outside, large-scale investment from the private sector. This is about confidence in Ipswich and our market. A catalytic project led by government provides certainty for the private sector, including long-term value proposition. This is something that has been sorely lacking within Ipswich Central for many years and has contributed to the demise of our CBD. It's a nonsense to suggest that developers would have undertaken high-rise residential development in the CBD without a thriving city centre. A key market requirement of investors is amenity and lifestyle. They need that to sell their product. Property investors, and indeed homeowners, would not be interested in purchasing residential high-rise without nearby amenities and a night time economy. There are a number of privately owned land holdings in the CBD that are perfect for residential high density. However, they have sat on the market for many, many years without interest from private developers. Our only other choice was to do nothing and leave the buildings as they are, but that was not a choice for our community. I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Doyle. Can I just thank you for your leadership with this? Without a doubt, this is probably our biggest project for our council, highest risk and very sensitive. It's very much in the front and centre of the public. You have been an amazing chair to lead the CBD redevelopment, something that you can feel very proud of. It's certainly been a baptism of fire with everyone having a view, but thank you very much for steering the ship to make sure that we do get the best outcome for the residents of Ipswich.
Thank you, mayor, for those words. And I just want to take the opportunity to thank councillor Kunsman for her assistance and support, ongoing support in relation to this committee. She attends all of the retail subcommittee meetings, and if she is not quite clear on something, she is very quick and eager to sit down to ensure she understands every single aspect. And I know the CBD redevelopment has been and will continue to be controversial, but I'm excited that, what I failed to mention before, we've actually made the Property Council of Australia their paper, which is called Legacy Precincts. So we rate a mention alongside Fish Lane and other extraordinary catalytic projects. And I will post the link to that on my Facebook page. It's a very interesting read and exciting future ahead.
Thank you, councillor Doyle. Councillor Kunsman?
Thank you, chair. I would also like to congratulate councillor Doyle on her leadership. And I do emphasise that it has been leadership in this project. And I understand that it's come, and I acknowledge that it's come at some cost to her, and that she has been the subject of some really awful responses from public and other potential councillors. So I congratulate you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. Thank you. We're up to item 16.1, the report of the Audit Risk Management Committee of the 14th of February 2024. I'll move that the report of the Audit Risk Management Committee be received and contents noted, and the recommendations contained therein be adopted. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Kunsman. In speaking to them, I'd just like to congratulate the chief audit executive, Mr Freddie Beck, on being awarded the Bob McDonald Award for outstanding contribution to the profession of internal audit. The Institute of Internal Auditors Australia named the Bob McDonald Award in honour of the first Australian to hold the position of international chairman of the global IIA, or the Internal Auditors Australia, and his outstanding contribution to the profession of internal audit. It's well done, Mr Freddie Beck. This recognition goes to show that Ipswich City Council not only has an efficient and effective internal audit function, but we are in fact exceeding our legislative requirements. So thank you, Mr Beck, and thank you, CEO. I'll open it for any other discussion on that report. Thank you, councillor Kunsman.
Council is indeed blessed to have Mr Freddie Beck and other council officers who have contributed to this committee. I congratulate the members of this committee for their attention to detail, their oversight of council activities. And I thank them also for the learning that I've experienced through that, through their patient explanations to my many questions. And I wish them well, especially the external members of this committee, who are useful, impartial, and helping us to get on with the best possible business for council.
Thank you, councillor Kunsman. Thank you. Yes, councillor Doyle?
Thank you, mayor. I just wanted to commend the Audit and Risk Management Committee members, including internal and external, for their ongoing oversight of the risks associated with council and council business, and in particular, the management of our asset improvement projects over time. So I know it's a biggie, and I know it's, you know, one of the biggest projects for council as well and one of our biggest responsibilities. So I just wanted to thank them, the members, including councillor Kunsman and councillor Doyle as well. There's some really chunky topics in that committee, and they go on for quite some time. Improvements happen over time, and they, and yeah, I'm watch on the journey through our reports. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Just in closing, I'm always very appreciative of the work of the Audit Risk Management Committee. Coming out of administration was a huge task, especially in regards to the culture of the organisation. So I'm very mindful of the large amount of work that goes into, you know, providing that safe workforce, safe working right for our staff, and the big improvements that have been made over the last few years. So thank you to the CEO and thank you to the Audit Committee. I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, it's unanimous and carried. Next item is a late item, 16.2, and because it's a late item, I move that in accordance with section 9.3.2 of council's meeting procedures policy, that council grant permission for the consideration of 16.2 entitled 11057/2022/PDAEE Municipal Infrastructure Works Trunk Transport Infrastructure Offset Approval. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Ireland. I'll put that to the vote. Those in favour, it's unanimous and carried. Thank you. We'll now look at item 16.2. This is a report considering the offset of project costs associated with the construction of a road in the Ripley Valley priority development area against levied infrastructure charges associated with the development in proximity of the road project. And the project in question is the construction of the Ripley Road between Parkview Parade and St Ternan Highway Ripley. So I will move that. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Ireland. I'll open that up for discussion. No, I'm just saying it's wonderful. It's a really, a huge step forward for our community. It's to have these works, and I think we've had a really great working relationship with the state government in the last few years to progress this as well. And so I thank EDQ for their support, the developers there, and I'm looking forward to a really great outcome. And I know in particular councillor Mattson, councillor Ireland, you have been working very hard in securing this funding as well. So thank you very much for the work that you've done. If there's another discussion, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, it's unanimous and carried. There are no notices of motion. There are no questions on notice. This is our last meeting. Thank you so much for all your service. When we first joined together four years ago, some of you had never even met each other before. So I think it's been, we've had a robust council. I think we've been a council that's fought with our, come together with our heads and our hearts. I wish you all the very best in the upcoming election in 15 days' time, and we sort of joke behind closed doors. We'll see who gets voted off the island. But thank you very much to the people of Ipswich who voted for us. We've certainly worked very hard to do our very best over the last four years. And with that, I will close the meeting now at 9.44.